Bob, does this bother you when it's here?
With her typing?
Oh, yeah.
With her typing?
It's David who can hear it.
Welcome everyone to our city council meeting for Monday, January 27th. If we have a roll call please to establish form.
Terry McClung.
I'm here.
Nikki Schneider.
Here.
Mary Meyer.
Here.
Melissa Green.
Here.
Susan Harmon.
Here.
Rob Thomas.
Here.
We have six.
Pledge allegiance please. Stand. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, get a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
The only thing I have is I'd like to combine item number one with item two under unfinished business. I think the item for the vote for the budget line items had to do with the parks tax and how that was to be handled on the budget. So, and we can see that when we get to it, that's been included. Is there anything else, Mrs. Thomas?
Yeah, I'd like to add travel guidelines.
I'll second that.
Anything else?
No.
All those in favor of the minutes, I mean, the agenda as amended, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Get a motion to approve the minutes for January 13th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Who seconded?
We both did.
All right.
Melissa seconded.
Any corrections, additions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes that submitted, sing five, sing aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Yeah, this comes to the time of the year when I give a state of the city review and I try to give a snapshot of how we're doing financially and where we were for last year because it's a pretty good, you know, barometer of our civic health and helps us maintain and shows the public how we manage our funds. You know, the city of Eureka Springs entered this year, or at 2019 I should say, on a lot more sound financial footing than we had in previous years. I was visiting with Lonnie earlier today and I think about four years ago, five years ago, Lonnie and I weren't getting much sleep because we were just about ready to go into, well, we were either going to go bankruptcy or we were going to have to start laying people off because of our financial situation. So, we're real proud that because of what we've done over the last four years in the council, you know, the end of December 19, we found that the expenses of the city were running about 10% under our budget estimates and while the revenues were running approximately 8% under our budget estimates. But overall, we ended up with almost a little over $800,000 into reserves in 2019. That's, you know, pretty good. And while we also continued to decrease our liabilities and our bonds. In May of 2018, the city council passed into law ordinance number 2265, which provided for the early retirement of both the 2008 and 2010 water sewer bonds. This financial strategy helped us to account, you know, accomplished two things simultaneously. One, we're paying off our long-term liability bonds and loans ahead of schedule while at the same time putting money into reserves. We're still on target to pay off the 2010 revenue refunding bonds ahead of schedule. With all this said, you know, it's something pretty fundamental, you know, we had to make a cultural shift in how we handle our money and our finances. You know, this shift involved the awareness, education, stabilizing unhealthy financial trends and establishing a tight and disciplined focus on results. I really want to thank all the city council members and also all the department heads who've helped make this change and shift in thinking and bring about these positive results because it ultimately benefits the citizens of Eureka Springs. You know, one of the things I appreciate about this annual review of all the areas of the city's perspective that it provides for all of us, the annual review is a time to lift our view up a little higher and consider each department through the objective eyes. You know, we're fortunate to have the public servants and departments and commissions and task force within the city who are truly dedicated in the very, you know, to serve the city in the very best manner possible. You know, I'd like to highlight some of the work that was accomplished in 2019 to give you a glimpse to the work that the city's accomplished and the commissions. In the police department, you know, some of the goals that were achieved in 2019 was they continued to build the community outreach and participated in programs such as Shop with a Cop. We conducted joint departments active shooter training preparations with Eureka Springs Fire EMS and Eureka Springs Public Schools. We've also replaced two patrol units through the continued vehicle depreciation program. And we integrated body cameras and standalone servers to the equipment that the police have for 2019. Also in 2019, we ended up with 1,961 calls for service. This includes all service or requests for officers. That was up from 1,734 in 2018, not quite over 250 additional calls. We had 828 offense and incident reports taken, 16 reports of domestic disturbances. We had 695 uniform citation issues, 981 warning citations, with 302 arrests, 118 warrants served, and 43 noise violations issued. You know, in the Fire EMS, we had Chief Samak and his officers work diligently to reduce the spending and help provide physical responsibility while operating six fire stations, a ladder truck, three brush trucks, three tanker trucks, a rescue truck, and five ALS ambulances. We had a lot of people disappear and retire from the Fire EMS. We had Bob Pettis who retired after a long career. He was the seventh EMS professional to be inducted into the Arkansas EMS Hall of Fame. Also retired was Michael Fitzpatrick, Jim Blair, and Captain Ray Birchfield. I think between those three, they had over 70 years of continuing service with EMS and Fire. These men donated a large portion of their lives helping to bring calm to the chaos when fire happens and emergencies occur. You know, we replaced the part of the financial spending that the Fire Department had was replacing final 10 self-contained breathing apparatuses needed to ensure firefighters have the quality breathing to sustain their lives while searching and rescuing others in hot steer environments. Our personal equipment personnel ensured annual service testing on all current scubas, ladders, fire engine pumps as required by NFPA. The Fire Department responded to 129 fire and rescue incidents, which is an increase over the previous year. Our department also responded to 1,500 EMS incidents, which is an 8% increase from 2018, which is also now stands as a record for EMS call volumes. The EMS revenues for 2019 was $694,000. This is a significant increase over last year. Part of that's due to the new billing contract and new collections contractors who worked diligently to help us increase the revenue. You know, we're extremely proud to say that our Fire Department members have attended over 6,800 man-hours for Fire EMS, Rescue, and Hazmat training to ensure a constant state of readiness to respond to any emergency in our community. The training of these people put into long hours away from their family while responding to emergencies is a true testament of their dedication and devotion to our personnel hold to our community and the residents that live here. In our Public Works Department, we've accomplished major things in 2019 and one of the big things we talked about in our budget meeting was a water loss from our city distribution system. By June, we had saved 53 million gallons and by the end of 2019, our continued efforts helped save almost $100,000 in water purchase cost. Phase two of trying to find our water leaks is underway and will be completed before the 2020 season begins in earnest. The first step is dividing our city into zones or what we call district metered areas. This proactive solution will provide real-time information on the integrity of water infrastructure and reducing overall water loss and non-revenue water losses and improves asset management. With Public Works, we also were awarded a $200,000 grant from AEDC for replacing the city water line on North Main that serves the Eureka Springs wastewater treatment plant as the existing line has experienced multiple leaks. During 2019, plant operation and alarm systems were also upgraded. Several lift stations, pump improvements, and multiple sewer mains were repaired, which noticeably reduced our inflow and infiltration. We continue to have projects that will increase the, help remove, the nutrients removal while expanding and reducing our operating and maintenance costs are underway for 2020. Public Works also had a focus on street repairs, on drainage repairs and improvements during 2019. As we all know, water does more damage to our streets than traffic and the multiple projects completed during 2019 included installing curbs, inlet boxes, and also new sidewalks to reduce future maintenance costs. By utilizing two grants, both of which were over $200,000 in 2018, for the hillside overlay and the Flint Street drainage project, we had enough in our reserve funds to bid several projects for the streets for an asphalt overlay during 2019. That project will include and be expanded to include several additional streets which will be completed this spring in 2020. So, many of our citizens will start to see some new street overlays. Large section of the loop will be sealed and several substandard streets will receive a sub base improvements during 2020. A sidewalk from Plainer Hill to the community center, which had been in our planning stages for several years, is scheduled to be started this year. With Eureka Springs Transit, we still remain the only transit system in the state of Arkansas that is solely self-supporting and does not receive any city funding. The transit statistics with the rides given were up 55, .55%. Had over 121,000 rides overall. Our fare revenue was up 1.13%. Total system revenue was up .8%. And the individual tram tour rides were up from 9,239, were up 1.4%. With the individual tour revenue up $151,300 or 1.24%. You know, in our City Advertising and Promotion Commission, 2019 was a year in transition, as most of us already realize, with the director of the retirement of Michael Maloney and the engagement of the new director, Lacy Eckberg. You know, in the process of the CAPC, they had the completion and embedding of the Eureka 360 component on the EurekaSprings.org website along with bike Eureka and social media platforms. EurekaSprings.org, the official tourism site for Eureka Springs, saw over 408,000 visitors, rating 536,000 sessions. Google AdWords produced over 64,900 actual clicks, which was a 45% increase over 2018. Here in the auditorium, we hosted 48 events in 2019, working in conjunction with Little Wing Production and in-house booking. As many of y'all noticed, during Christmas time, we had new Christmas lights added on to the auditorium along with the cooperative efforts of Heart of Eureka Springs to get the entire downtown area lit up. We had 35 additional holiday banners and flags were installed not only downtown but along the upper historic loop. Had traffic, public, tracking public relation values in 2019 produced a reported value of $6.1 million. This higher than normal amount can be attributed to several appearances on TV shows, Ghost Adventures, on the Travel Channel, and on Counting On on TLC, as well as the release of two independent films, The Gospel of Eureka and Antiquities, where we were both filmed in Eureka Springs, plus added press releases and PRs. Tax collections grew 2% with 1.5 million, 1.5 million in 2019 compared to 1.4 million in 2018. We're now using Smith Travel Research to show our daily logging occupancies and revenue rates. So, attendance also, many of our CAPC staff attended local tour group meetings with welcome booths and informational handouts. With the Parks and Recreation Commission, Parks had a tumultuous year in 2019. It's a year of continued rapid growth and development, also a year of growing concern and questions from within the community. Community questions and concerns include the use of the parks tax for their intended use, checks and balances in place in Parks and Rec to ensure policies and procedures are being followed, and development, preservation of public lands according to the master plan while noting the need to update the master plan. There are strides that have made parks in 2019 that are worthy of mention here though, not to sidestep or dismiss the concerns of the citizen, but to bring some perspective of where we are and where we're heading in parks. Here are some of the things that we're thinking about. While many have voiced concerns from the community that parks major focus, focus on downhill trails to the exclusion of all other parks within the city, while this was certainly one part of parks operation, there were several others. One of the major expenses involved with parks is the care and maintenance of the pocket parks and the purchase of plants commercially. They came up with a solution of this in the form of a grant from AT&amp;T to install a greenhouse at the community center. In March 2019, a greenhouse operation and management agreement was executed between the Eureka Springs Community Center and the Eureka Springs Park and Rec Commission, appointing the latter as the operator of the greenhouse. Since completion, the build-out of the interior of the greenhouse has commenced, including an irrigation system, tables, and equipment. The interior build-out is on target to be completed by the end of this month. Two primary programs will be developed. One, the propagation of annuals for rotation in the annual bins in each of the gardens. And two, propagation of native plants to implement the garden design developed by the Springs Garden and Greenhouse Committee and approved by the Parks and Rec Commission. Once planted, the maintenance of the pocket parks has historically been labor-intensive because of the lack of irrigation systems. And this was causing the gardeners spent two to three hours each day watering the plants from the lack of sufficient water. The plants suffered quite a bit. So, we've been repairing the irrigation system and the ones that were damaged have been removed and replaced. Additionally, we've set a set of guidelines for the parks, for the spring gardens. This is a written, organized, comprehensive plan for the gardens, which is a first for parks. And we have a lot to thank for our gardener, Scott, to help us get this completed. Parks is absolutely dependent on volunteers, as many of our other commissions are. And they plan and carry out a lot of our care. And to this end, a comprehensive plan for volunteerism was developed, which includes numerous elements, including adopt a park and adopt a trail program. On the equipment side, parks acquired a dump truck, park vehicles, a couple of shuttle vehicles, and thanks to a grant from Walton Skid Steer and some other equipment. And also, this equipment is allowing the parks to tackle many more projects than they used to have in the past. On the fiscal side of parks, it became clear that the current accounting process in place was not keeping pace with not only the growth and development of the parks, but it was also not keeping pace with the requirement to report and inform the commission, city council, and the public on the use of their money. The commission decided to take the accounting process external to a local CPA firm to handle parks accounting functions. More importantly, in keyed citizen concern of fiscal matters within the parks, the CPA firm has been requested to immediately identify any areas of procedural concerns and flag these to the commission. The commission, city council, and the public still await the third and fourth quarter certified financials under the new accounting procedures. The general complaint about parks focus on tourism is that we need to serve the residents. This is a true and valid point. We're fortunate that as a small system, we've had the revenue occupancies to do so, and we're now capitalizing on the support and development of programming and more services for local residents. It's interesting to note some statistics, and most of us already know, that we have almost nearly an acre of parkland per citizens. By comparison, the 2019 NRPA survey offers a mean as 10.1 acres of parkland per thousand residents. We have nearly 90 times that acreage per capita. National average is one playground per 3,000 residents. We have one for every 1,000 residents. We spend approximately $300 an acre on last year's budget, while the national average expenditure per acre is $6,750. Well, these are just some perspectives to consider. We still have a lot to go on. But we've also got several new parks commissioners on the commission. While the commission is entirely dedicated to a more positive engagement with the community and confidence that the parks, work of the parks is impacting our system as a whole. To the citizens who have voiced growing concerns regarding the broad range of Eureka Springs, your concerns have been heard, I think, by the Parks Commission, by the staff, and who have made public their comments through both their collective actions already in place, as well as the shift in taking place internally. Your concerns are heard by the city council, to whom the Parks Commission is physically responsible. With the hospital commissions, I'm talking about, this is a new one that I'm just reporting on because this is a new event that's coming up to us. In 2019, we had a lot of changes in the Eureka Springs Hospital as previous management company prepared to hand over the day-to-day operations to the Eureka Springs Hospital Commission. This transition will officially take place just in just a few days on February 1st. Margaret Mead said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. The hospital commissions embodies this quote. Their goal for 2020 is to locally manage the Eureka Springs Hospital, services and employees, and to deliver the critical care access to our community. It's no small task and one that is vital to any community. And I'm personally grateful to the men and women of the hospital commission for doing a great service to our community. Thank you. Also, we've had several subcommittees within the mayor's office. We've had the Task Force on Economic Development. And through this, with the alliance of the Small Business Administration, we've developed a comprehensive monthly schedule of free business development, training, and workshops. These free workshops rotate between Eureka Springs and Berryville and in collaboration with Heart of Eureka, Main Street, and the Berryville Chamber of Commerce. Through the alliance of SBA, we've had, already had one business able to secure an SBA loan, and several are now in the works. If you have a business idea, a business plan, or you want to expand your business, contact the task force and we'll help you with new resources now available. We've also been working on, you know, two other alternatives and initiatives. We've got, trying to work on a culinary art school throughout the Carroll County Career Center and a feasibility initiative on starting a construction trade school in Eureka Springs. Both of these are, I'm going to help supply workers for our community. We've also had an affordable housing committee that's been meeting monthly and making progress with developers and contractors on a wide range. This committee is comprised of not only the mayor of Eureka Springs, but the mayor of Berryville and Green Forest, and all the banks and realtors and developers. You know, we've been having a lot of impact into that. We've had new subdivisions developed in Eureka Springs for the first time in, I don't know, 10 years, maybe longer. We've had new housing projects come up, and all of this has gone toward helping us solve some of our housing problems. Within the code enforcement, building inspectors, we've had, integrated with the permitting system, which permits now the ability to track the violations and track repeat offenders. Some of the enforcement violations have been, we've had 23 clean city ordinance abandoned vehicles. We've had 10 prohibited sign violations, 11 prohibited banners. We've contacted and had improved five sidewalk areas. We've had grass, unsanitary conditions, unsightly conditions, and work done without the HDC approval, all addressed by the building official. We've had an increase of 2% in building permits from last year. Building permits for 2019 were $22,766. New construction is on the rise and projected to continue through 2020. We've had a reassessment of the sidewalks, which I know has been on everybody's mind and concern, and with notification letters have been sent out and will be, continue to be sent out through 2020, and we'll see more sidewalks repaired. Within the historic district, we've had new construction projects approved, seven major additional or new construction projects, four major restoration projects. And the HDC has also produced a full color brochure about the role of the HDC commission and mailed one to each property in the district. Commissioners and staff attended two in-state training workshops since in Arkansas. We're going to hear more, I'm sure, from the planning commission here shortly and their report. But we've had new commercial projects approved with dog wash up on West Van Buren. We've had two new tourist lodging units on Mill Hollow, another four tourist lodging units along Pivot Rock Road. We had a denial of a tourist lodging, and we also had a rezoning application approved up on top of Plainer Hill. We've also had the commissioners attending a training session over in Bentonville, and we had the municipal league planner present a workshop in Eureka Springs. And the commission also completed an extensive revision and will be presenting to the council soon, the tree preservation ordinance. There's several other items I want to make that I'm pretty excited about, and one of them is the municipal solar energy system. Last year, with council vote, the city entered into agreement with Integrity to develop a project that would lower the utility cost for the city of Eureka Springs by going solar and making other energy efficient changes. Integrity has conducted site visits on all city property and completed an energy efficiency audit portion of the project. They will make a presentation to the city council to pursue the solar service agreement in one of the February council meetings. And since the hospital will soon be under the city, I've asked Integrity to also look at going through and doing an energy audit for the hospital and adding them on to our solar system. As a reminder, pursuing this agreement does not include any investment by the city. We continue to pound away at funding for repairs at Black Bass Dam. And I continually talk to not only the state but federal legislative offices, as well as trying to find grant finding sources for this project. I'm meeting, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks with some people from northwest Arkansas coming over and looking at Black Bass Dam to see about possible funding for them. So, keep your fingers crossed and send your prayers. Also, I want to mention and acknowledge a couple of nice awards that the city's received. Echo Village and the Mayor's Task Force on Economic Development won the Community of Year Award for the city to be presented at the municipal league conference in February. The Arts Council won the Arkansas Business Trend City City of the Year honor for their street art program. And the Art Council is nominated by the Distinguished Volunteer Service Award for once again the Excellence in Tourism Henry Award. The Native Plant Garden Project won the Arkansas Business Trend Center Year of the Award Honor for Environmental and Green Management. You know, there are numerous other projects and activities, efforts, and areas within focus of the city. What I mentioned kind of highlights is some of the work that's being done for the greater good of the city and the city of Eureka Springs. I'm excited for the future of Eureka, and with the help and support of the citizens, we'll continue to make Eureka the best place for all of us. we'll continue to make Eureka the best place for all of us to live, and I'd like to thank all of you for the opportunity to speak today, and it's my honor to serve as mayor of Eureka Springs. So, thank you. And now, that brings, after that, to report. We have an update from the planning on our vision plan update.
Thank you.
I didn't want you to tell too much of your thunder.
I want a red one.
Hot blue.
The colors are arbitrary.
Really? You didn't pick purple for me?
The council has requested a, whoops. Can you, can they hear me? Okay. The council requested an update on the planning commission and board of zoning adjustments, review of the vision plan. So there's a short memo on top of that, just to paraphrase it, the project was initiated during last year. We did have some changes in the commission, so some people who were working on the project left, other new commissioners came in and have not yet started, but the, we've been working on some code revisions that have really dominated the commission timeline, but I'm going to give you an overview of where we are now, and we'll readdress our commitment to that. At the commission's annual meeting with the mayor and Jim Von Tublin from the municipal league, Jim's observation of our master plan is that it is still suitable and doesn't need any major revisions at this time. This review, there are 10 sections of the vision plan. We've encompassed four of them, and what I have attached to that are the initial reports from the commissioners. They are by no means final, but this will give you a good idea of the detail that we've been looking into these. They're not blowovers, they're pretty darn substantive of both our goals that we have met for the city and the vision plan that's been approved, and also observations on things that do need some updating, especially 20th century technology is something that we really need to embark into. We'd like to initiate some work with Parks and Recreation and other city areas so that we are informed of master plans concerning parks in particular, and how to integrate them into the city plan as far as the vision plan is concerned. So that covers that. In the folder I'm just passing out, there's a cover letter with that, that's our new tree preservation ordinance. We'd like for, invite the commission or the council people to review that for the next several weeks, get together with me with any questions that you have, and then getting your comments back in about a month, we can then undertake putting it into a final form, incorporating your comments, getting it into a formal resolution form. We were about as far as we can take it without involving the council. So, any questions at this time? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Under the cemetery, we have two positions that are expiring here in February, and both of them are renewed. One is for Glenn Booth, position four, and David Salley, position five. Both are reapplying for their terms. Mr. Thompson, or Ms. Snyder?
I make a motion that we renew Glenn Booth, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing five by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, so moved. Ms. Green?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve David Salley for position five, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing five by saying aye. Any opposed? So moved. All right. That brings us up to public comments. Please limit your time to three minutes.
Linda McBride. Mayor, council members, and other elected appointed officials and employees of the city, I appreciate the work you do and the time you spend on city business. I know your task isn't easy, and on some days, it's more stressful than you ever imagined. I thank you. I'm here tonight asking for accountability, transparency, and clarity from the Parks Department. I understand the autonomy part where Eureka Springs city government is not responsible for the daily operation of parks. However, the 1,700 acres of land Parks manages belongs to Eureka Springs, Arkansas, not to the Parks Department, and the citizens' tax dollars help fund parks. As a citizen and supporter of this town, I'm very concerned with how our Parks Department now stands in regard to accountability, transparency, and clarity in the daily operation, especially how our tax dollars are being spent in accordance with ordinances voted on and passed by the citizens of this community. Here are a few examples. During a commission meeting on April the 16th, former commissioner Stephen Foster, who resigned last week, asked director Justin Huss for a more itemized financial report from here forward rather than a brief summarization. Our director said, "I will not hold a financial meeting," saying he attends too many. The question posed by Commissioner Foster was pertinent, and despite the lack of response by the director, I wanted to know the financial health of the department and understand how our tax dollars are being spent and accounted for. That was the spark that ignited on August the 26th, 2019. My first of 38 FOIA's were filed with Parks. I filed two more, but those are not about tonight. As of tonight, the mayor and city council members have not received a 2000, their third quarter, financial report from Parks. I'm not sure where the fourth counter stood. In the Eureka Springs municipal code book, the expectation of a financial quarterly report from Parks to the mayor and council members is clearly outlined in their code of ordinances. To better understand the ledgers as they were presented in respect to my FOIA's, I hired a forensic accountant and two attorneys. Of the 38 FOIA's I filed, I count 18 negligent, and my lawyers count more. Each FOI answered with negligence is a Class C misdemeanor punishable by jail time and a $500 fine under Arkansas FOIA law. There was no balancing of the accounting software for 18 months with Parks. The director approves all of his own expenses with no oversight. He approves them all for whatever he wants to do. Chairman Feathers, Sean, has been on the Parks Commission for 20 years, and 17 of those years, he's done some right, but my FOIA's show that the Parks Department is untendable and unacceptable. The above are very, very few examples of misfeasance, nonfeasance, and malfeasance that I have witnessed and learned about in our Parks Department. As a city and a taxpayer, I call on the city to direct a review of the director and the chairman. I printed my stuff off, and I will give you the rest of it in a minute about where the red flags are. Thank you for your time.
You're done, Damon.
Yeah, that didn't go very long.
Yeah.
I'm on. Damon Henke here. Tonight, I am representing Mardi Gras, because we've got a full lot coming up here. We'll turn that up a little bit so we don't blast out anybody's ear. But now, this Saturday, we've got Taste of New Orleans down at the Grand Central. That's at 1 o'clock, and following that is Crude to Corks. It's called the Harley Quinn Ball. And then, the following weekend, we start into our balls. We've got the Coronation Ball on Friday, the Night Parade on the 15th. I guess that's two weekends from there. So the 14th is the Coronation Ball, 15th Night Parade, and then the following weekend, the 21st Day Parade. 21st is Joker's Ball, and the 22nd is the Day Parade. So dust off your beads and come on out and be ready for Mardi Gras. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Fisher. I'm an upper historic loop property owner and former City Limits resident. I'm concerned about our expectations of the Parks Commission. In March of 2018, the city council was advised by Alderperson Christine Kendrick that, quote, "Parks must be held to statutory and city code requirements," and that they must seek approval of their 2014 Lake Leatherwood City Park master plan by the city council, end quote. She explained that Parks had not updated or revised this plan, nor the Parks master trial plan, and that 1/8% sales tax vote provides specific funds to improve the park in accordance with the LLCP master plan. This scenario has not been adequately addressed, as the Parks LLCP master plan has not been presented for your approval and not been adequately reviewed or updated by Parks themselves, as they promised in the executive summary stating, quote, "It will," this plan, "therefore be reviewed and updated annually by the commission." Parks did revise a document titled the Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, in mid-2017, but this internal working list of potential projects to improve the park does not formally update the LLCP master plan, nor is it posted on the EurekaParks.com website. Meanwhile, the Walton Family Foundation-funded Gravity Trails project underway since November of 2017 has brought miles of trails and acres of facilities to the Miners Rock area of the park. Yet the current LLCP master plan, the Trails master plan, nor the CIP mention at all in any way how Parks might propose, consider, approve, fund, construct, or even begin to implement this very consequential project. Parks is now working on a Vision 2020 Parks master plan. At the first public meeting, a town hall event, Parks did not affirm the status of their existing plans or how these documents might be integrated with a new vision effort. It appears that Parks is dismissing their obligation to clarify how they employ these outdated plans while our sales tax revenues are used to improve our park. I respectfully ask, please, city council, inform Parks that the use of the 1/8% sales tax must be in accordance with the plan they produced in 2014. Please, please obligate them to perform their expected duty with due diligence. Thank you.
I will neither. I can't talk fast. My name is Pat Kosner, and I'm very pleased to be able to speak to you this evening. Now, what I will talk about is still Parks matters. If you will look at this little three-page handout I gave you, I want to take you to the first column. I have been going through tax, the general ledgers for Parks from 2013 through 2019. In the first column of data, if you will kind of take a look at this, this will show you how the 1/8 cent tax that is supposed to be used to support and carry out the master plan for Lake Leatherwood City Park, how it's fluctuated. But I draw your attention to the tax for 2017. If you'll notice, it's drastically different, like $30,000 to $40,000 difference from the preceding and following tax income for the Parks. And that's because there are only nine monthly deposits listed in that 2017 register. So I think there's $30,000 to $40,000 that needs to be accounted for. Now, if you'll go to the second page, I have gone through the 2019 general ledger. And as you can see, the 1/8 cent sales tax brought in nearly $130,000. The total expenditure for the LLCP master plan was $96,000. However, within those total expenditures, there were expense categories and expenses that evidently are not in accordance with the LLCP master plan. For example, downhill trail. Downhill trail has two entries, each described as shuttle turnaround at the top. There's nothing about shuttles or shuttle turnarounds in the master plan. And in fact, I would suggest that is something that Rock Solid should have constructed and attended to when they were there putting in the trails. The master plan contingency has one entry, wake and shed shred video. If you know mountain biking terminology, shred fits right in with it. I do not believe there's anything in the master plan about making a mountain biking video. Recreational programming has four entries. Two are for the shuttle bug, driver reimbursement, two for adventure mountain outfitters shuttle service. There's nothing in the master plan about either of those kinds of items. Shuttle service. Shuttle service, 49 entries totaling $71,000. There's nothing about shuttle service in the LLCP master plan. Shuttle, and just, just for contrast, I put in shuttle service income. You'll note the income is $42,000 as opposed to the outgo of 70, nearly 79,000. So, thank you.
All right, that concludes the public comments. We have given motion to discuss the 2020 budget.
Motion to discuss, second.
We have before us a resolution on the 2020 budget, I think, within that, open for discussion. Mr. Thomas?
I'm just, would like to ask Mr. Clark, where the Parks, where you put in the Parks money?
Okay, in page one. In the account 0100432, you added sales tax, Parks Commission, $335,000. That's the revenue side.
Sales tax.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right up, right up here.
$435,000.
Okay, is that, is that both taxes?
That's, that's the entire amount, yes.
Okay.
4032.
Yeah, right at the top. 4032, right up there.
On nondepartmental revenues.
Okay.
Dispersed revenues, nondepartmental.
Okay. Do they, do they come in, there's two taxes, correct? A quarter and an eighth?
Yes.
Do they come in separately, or do they just come in?
No, they come in separate.
Okay. Do they go to separate accounts?
We transfer it to one account.
Okay.
And then we send Parks the breakdown.
Okay.
I thought we got one deposit from the state of Arkansas that included three, all three taxes.
Well, we do, but we get, we get a breakdown of the tax on Parks.
In that letter from that you get?
Yes. And then the dispersment part is down. In the account 0100572, we added sales tax, Parks Commission, $435,000. That's the revenue side.
Sales tax. Oh, okay. Right up here.
$435,000.
Okay, is that, is that both taxes?
That's, that's the entire amount, yes.
Okay.
4032.
Yeah, right at the top. 4032, right up there.
On non-departmental revenues.
Okay.
Estimated revenues, non-departmental.
Okay. Do they, do they come in, there's two taxes, correct? A quarter and an eighth?
Yes.
Do they come in separately, or do they just come in?
No, they come in separate.
Okay. Do they go to separate accounts?
We transfer it to one account.
Okay.
And then we send Parks the breakdown.
Okay.
I thought we got one deposit from the state of Arkansas that included three, all three taxes?
Well, we do, but we get, we get a breakdown of the tax on Parks.
In that letter from that you get?
Yes. And then the dispersment part is down in the next section of appropriations, non-departmental, in account 01005720, transfers out, sales tax Parks, $435,000.
Do we have a number, please?
Sorry?
A number?
Oh, here it is. I couldn't hear it. Went too fast. I couldn't hear you, you went too fast.
So, it's coming in like we talked about, and it's going out the same amount, because that's what we transfer.
Did you have a hearing, maybe you'll walk over and point to it for me, like you did for me? Thank you.
All right, any other questions? How do we come with the, come up with the numbers for salaries and wages compared to what was actually spent last year? I mean, there seems to be some departments have, you know, $30,000 more in the amount. I know it's not all going to be spent, but others, it's just a few thousand dollars over.
Well, most of those, it's submitted by the department head, and then we go through and employees that they have, positions that they have, and of course, there's also some additional costs in there, payroll taxes, so on and so forth. And, you know, we have a listing of each one, each department.
But now, the mayor in his budget sets the wages for each. I mean, the department head makes a request, but they don't get their request, they get whatever you and the mayor work out, right? I mean, $10 an hour is starting pay at Public Works, but it's not starting pay in other places. So, how is that? I mean, our Public Works guys are paid less than anybody else in the county, so I'm wondering why.
The department head submit their, their application and their salaries to us. I do not deduct, and Lonnie doesn't deduct their.
You hold them to a points system for raises, though, don't you?
For merit. But they submit their, their recommendations on their salaries to us. We don't go in and say that need to be cut, or that need to be increased. This is all depend on, on, so, the department heads.
So, Duane requested $10 an hour starting pay for his people.
Well, not for every person in there, there's several that they get more than that.
Starting pay?
Yes.
Well, there's eight guys at $10 an hour.
Not everybody gets $10 an hour in Duane's department.
There's eight, there's eight people that make less than $11 an hour in, in Public Works. And there's no place else in town. I mean, why don't we pay them more money? I mean, we can't just blame it on Duane. And the 3% COLA is a cost of living allowance. That's cost of living. If you hold back 1% for an incentive, that's like a tax cut, that's slapping them in, I mean, a pay cut, that's slapping them in the face. I don't understand. Now, I understand the city needs to hold, take, keep control of its budget, but, but, you know, if we're going to get this work we, we need done and to keep our public, our employees, and, golly, they're all, these guys making a little bit of money, they're eligible for food stamps. It's, I don't understand it. I think we can do better than that. We can't blame it on the department heads. Any other comments, questions? Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion and reassign this resolution to number and read it for passage.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Sign this to number and read for passage. Any further comments? All right. Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Five, one. The resolution number will be 770. Resolution providing for and adopting budgets for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure therein provided for. Whereas the City Council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has made a comprehensive study and review of the proposed budgets, and whereas in the opinion of the City Council, the proposed 2020 budget presents as accurately as possible the city's anticipated revenues and expenditures for the 2020 calendar year. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, this resolution shall be known as the Budget Resolution for the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for the 12-month period beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. And the attached 2020 budget documents reflect estimated revenues and expenditures in detail for the period. All revenues and appropriations are based on estimated revenues, and all estimates are subject to change during the budgetary period. Section two, the amounts for revenues and expenditures proposed in the 2020 municipal budget are hereby authorized and appropriated for the purposes set forth in the calendar year ending December 31, 2020. Estimated revenues for the general fund, $4,205,515. An appropriation for the same, $4,170,467. Estimated revenues for the street fund, $1,087,900. And appropriations, $1,084,719. Estimated revenues for lot fee, $343,549. And appropriations, $266,159. Estimated revenue for the capital fund, $267,705. And expenditures, capital fund, $267,705. Debt service, estimated revenue, $1,408,800. Appropriations for same, $1,301,000. Estimated revenues for court automation, $16,000. An appropriation of $16,000. Revenues for the fireman's pension fund, $111,600. And expenditures, $110,800. For the water and sewer fund, estimated revenues of $2,162,200. And appropriations at $1,059,837. For the transit fund, estimated revenues are $1,643,241. Appropriations for same, $1,526,466. So the total estimated revenues are listed as $11,241,510. And appropriations of $10,803,153.
All right, that brings us to our next item.
Good night.
Ordinance number 2292, Creation Entertainment District, second reading.
Motion, please, Captain.
Second.
I got a motion and discussion. I think at our last meeting, we asked for some, the Entertainment Committee to look at some information, and they submitted, they met and submitted something to us. Mr. Thomas, do you have?
I do, I guess I have the only copy.
You do, unfortunately.
Apologize for that.
Well, I apologize also.
So this is, this comes from Entertainment District. The Entertainment District Committee recommends that the judgment of the success or failure of the Entertainment District should rest in the hands of the mayor, Public Works Director, Chief of Police, Parks Director, and Fire Chief Marshall. Fire Chief slash Marshall. We further recommend that the above leadership evaluate the overall performance based on a balance of community well-being, economic stimulus, and visitor satisfaction. So I think basically the Entertainment District Committee has said, rather than count bodies and count, you know, all kinds of statistics, they just are going to rely on the expertise of our city leaders to make a judgment call after they've looked at the information.
Any further comments? Ms. Snyder?
At the last meeting, I brought, brought up a lot of financial questions and asked you to be able to talk about those at this meeting. What's it going to cost? Who's going to pay, so on and so forth? What's it going to cost the city to do this?
At this point in time, the, the Public Works see no extra cost, and the same with the Police Department.
Okay, now explain how there can be no extra cost.
I'm just telling you what I was told by the Police Department and the Public Works.
Don't you all discuss this at the department head meeting?
And they were said there's no extra cost. I think they also met with, with the Entertainment Committee. Mr. Thomas, was that correct?
The police, one of the police chiefs is on the Entertainment District Committee.
I'm aware of that, that's not what I'm saying, okay. One of the things that the police chief had explained was, come summertime when there's no school in, the cop that does the school stuff will be available, so he can do those weekends. Except they're talking about installing it right now. He won't be available without paying extra. See what I mean? There's all these little things that nobody is being clear about. And I don't think it's right that we're voting on doing something this massive in so many ways without line items, so to speak. What's it going to cost? Who's going to pay? Who's going to do this? Who's going to do that? We need this worked out, rather than start it and then trip and fall, because we don't have it done. This is silly. The same thing for doing a test run this time of year when there's nobody around? What's the point? Other than, well, if there's nobody around, then we won't have incidents, so we can do it. Summertime, you know, when, when we have people, that's when you want to test run it. Because if you don't have any people participating, how can you call that a test run? I don't understand any of this, because it's not being done logically. And I realize that word has been removed within 100 miles of Eureka, but we need to know what it's going to cost. In the summertime, fine, so we won't have any extra comp费, but we will now. And if we have a bunch of people out there doing, yes, we're going to have extra Public Works working, cleaning, you know, emptying out trash cans, cleaning up sidewalks. You, me, and Terry, long timers, know what it's been like, and Anne, all four of us, we know what it's been like in regards to cleaning. We need to be honest about it and bring it up in black and white before we sell our souls. This is ridiculous. Why is everybody afraid to look at this totally?
Are you finished?
I'm waiting for your financial answer that I asked before.
I'm being honest, at this point in time, you're talking about unknowns, and the response I got from the Police Department and Public Works is they don't anticipate any extra cost. And we will know better after we see what happens with this three-month, six-month period of time we have.
So explain to me why this is good at this time period? Why is this early notorious around time period better than when there are archers around? Explain that to me.
Ms. Green?
Well, Harry was first.
Well, you know, the whole thing about an experiment, we have temporary Entertainment Districts enabled right now, so that would be a pretty good experiment to let run for a while. But I can see that there's a majority here that want to pass this. I say we truncate the experimental zone to go up and go down the steps next to, next to 71 Spring Street and to Mountain Street, and then over to Center Street and back, because up at the top of the hill, Brew's doesn't want to participate, neither does Rogue's Manor, and so you can walk a long ways without a drink that direction, except to your car.
Ms. Green?
Mickey, for you, by the time we pass this in the 30 days, it's going to be March, and it'll be spring break, and we have a pretty busy spring, so I think we'll have some indication what it's going to cause, what problems are going to be. So you're saying a bunch of young'uns being allowed to go out there and drink isn't going to be a problem? My spring break people aren't young, they're teachers. That's never what I ever had in the shops. We've got three weeks, three weeks of spring breaks, we're talking a bunch of young kids. I never have them.
All right, anybody else? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I would suggest that we change the dates on this, because actually, this would not go into effect until the 13th of March. I would like to see it have a six-month trial period, which would make it run from the 13th of March to the 13th of September. So I would move that we amend those dates to read to the 13th of September.
I will second that. We do have that.
All right, we got a motion and a second to amend this to the, to, from June 30th to September 30th.
No, just from March 13th.
Of March 13th.
To September 13th.
Can I make a motion to truncate the?
No, there's only one motion at a time. Actually, from midnight, shall expire on midnight on September 30th. Is Mr. Thomas?
13.
13.
Beg your pardon?
13. Where are you seeing that date? No, he's adding that, it's his amendment.
Well, if we meet on February 13th for the third reading, then we have to wait 30 days, that's March 13th.
Okay, that's okay, March, September 13th's fine. Okay. So we got a motion to amend it from June 30th to September 13th. Mr. McClung?
I just wanted to say that it probably better just to have the end date and not the beginning date, just in case.
And that's what, that's.
For your information.
That's what it is.
Oh, okay, all right.
I'm sorry.
Because he was talking about March 13th.
No, I, I mentioned that.
That's inception, yeah, okay, all right.
Now, it will leave that it will, it will expire and cease to exist at mid, 12:00 midnight on September 13th, 2020. 2000, should be 2000.
2020, that's right.
Yeah, so it's 2019 right now.
This isn't, this must be an old one, but.
Okay, Ms. Snyder?
Now, I'm not sure where it is in here or what's happened to it. We do have the right, though, to end it at any point if it's not working, right?
That's correct.
And that's in this?
That's in the same section, section seven. I believe that's only the police chief. But we're discussing the amendment at this point. Do we have any further discussion on the amendment? All right, all of those in favor of the amendment, signify by, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Snyder?
Okay, so what are all these marked out areas on the front page? These aren't going to be in here anymore?
Okay.
At the last meeting, Mr. Thomas presented six points. It was agreed to add those six points. Mr. Weaver sent the. Mr. Weaver sent the modified version today. I went through, and also Mr. Thomas went through, to identify where language was added. And if Mr. Weaver is in agreement, but that, what you're seeing in shadow is.
What we said.
The recommended changes, some of which are combined.
Okay, so everything is in here that he had brought up, those items, to be added?
No, I didn't say that.
The other thing, Mr. Thomas suggested that was amended.
Right.
I don't know that that's the case. As a matter of fact, I think that that is probably not the case. So at this point, I'd like to ask Mr. Weaver about these two.
Or Mr. Thomas.
Well, Mr. Weaver's the one who prepared this document.
There are some differences in the six suggestions that Mr. Thomas created. I combined a couple of them. And there's one that would not have allowed for the permission of alcohol to be drank within the district by anyone who wasn't using a district cup. And that would have eliminated the use of bars within the district who wish to not participate, be able to drink within their own bars. Or individuals drink within their own homes if they are within the district. So I eliminated that particular restriction. I think that would have probably gotten sued for trying to eliminate someone's bar.
Have that back to please.
All right. Ms. Snyder?
Okay, then in view of all the massive changes that have been done, can we hold off on a vote tonight until we can get a full, complete, final copy so we can actually know for sure what it is we're voting for or against, please?
This is a final copy.
No, it isn't. This is not a final copy.
It's what was read with the changes.
It is, it is the final copy. The final copy is in here as amended tonight. As amended.
This is not a final copy. This is a changed, amended copy.
Ma'am, you always have the right to defer anything.
I'm asking if we can just put off the vote until the next meeting, until we can have a proper copy.
If you want to defer it, you can make a motion to defer it. And if there's a second, it will be deferred.
Yeah, like that's going to happen. I make a motion that we defer until the next meeting when we have a final copy.
All right, is there a second? Hearing no second. All right. Anything else? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I have a question for the city attorney. My suggested amendment says that you could not have a cup larger than 16 ounces.
Yes.
You rewrote it to say that you could not, you could not have a container that shall contain more than 16 fluid ounces. So in other words, somebody could have a great big container as long as it only had 16 ounces of drink in it.
You could interpret it that way, but the idea is to limit the amount of alcohol. And I think this allows the police to judge that there's only 16 ounces of alcohol there. If you buy a festival cup, you may find that a lot of festivals come in 20-ounce. But they should not be filled beyond the 16-ounce requirement based on this.
Okay. And the other thing was the, all the signs at the egress and ingress for the permittees?
Yes.
Was also supposed to include clearly warned viewers of the prohibition against the removal of alcoholic beverages from the confines of the district. Just a warning on the sign.
If the council desires to get into the actual wording of the sign, I can, that can be done. But if you put a boundary map there. I think you're implying that that's the area. I mean, you could post a whole ordinance, but no one's going to stop and read the whole ordinance. They're going to look at the boundary map, more likely, and see where they can't go or can go. And they shouldn't be able to interpret that as understanding that that is the distance that they can travel. If they're not, I mean, if they need the whole ordinance, then we should post the whole ordinance at each place.
Well, how would this necessarily what the boundaries are? You've removed it all.
No, it's still there. I'm sorry. What was your question? Ms. Snyder?
Okay, it's the part that says that there's going to be a boundary map or whatever, and there's going to be signs. All that's been crossed off. No? So what means they've added that? No, this is crossed off.
No, darling, that's added.
That's added. All right. I kept talking about crossed off, and nobody said anything. God.
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Meyer? I make a motion that we truncate this thing to, to where it goes down the steps to Mountain Street, and go down Mountain Street to Center Street and back, instead of going all the way up around to German Alley. There's citizens over there that have complained about that. There's residences around there. It's, and, and. This is an experimental anyway, right? Let's make this experimental area smaller.
I agree.
Will you second?
Yes, I do.
All right, got a motion and a second to reduce the section. I'm not sure where the steps on Mountain Street. The steps that go down next to the lavatories, the toilets, next to.
On Spring Street.
On Spring Street to Mountain Street. Okay, so you want to reduce the upper part. Okay. Everybody understand what they're talking about?
Can't go as far as the galleries there.
You can't go above the gallery. Correct. No galleries will be eliminated.
So not like the Palace Hotel, that?
Palace Hotel will be eliminated. Anything above the galleries.
Right there at the grill.
The grill.
New Orleans Hotel.
All right, Mr. Thomas?
I'd just like to say that I met with Mike, who was one of the three owners at Brew's, and he said he absolutely wanted to be included in the Entertainment District. So, you know.
I met with them all, and they said the opposite.
All three of them?
Yes.
I met with Mike also, and he said he firmly was in favor of it.
I think what Mike said was that.
I think they're afraid to express any.
No, what opinion away from?
Would you just, hold on just a moment. Mr. Thomas?
I heard that they were, that two of the owners were opposed to Entertainment Districts. But if there was going to be an Entertainment District, they wanted to be included in it. That's what, that's what Mike told me.
Okay. I can tell you. Wait, please, please.
And the young women that have, I think it's mojos, wanted very desperately to be included, and I think they were one of the peoples that were the driving forces. So I guess.
All right, Mr. Meyer? Okay, it's, this is an experiment. But now, I talked to John, and I talked to Bill. They said they had a meeting with the employees, they all talked about it, and they decided, no, they're not going to send anybody out with a drink. And they don't want to be included in it. And definitely, definitely up there at the, oh, shoot. At Rogues Manor, Smith was totally against this whole thing, and he doesn't want to be exposed to it. So we're not truncated.
Ms. Harmon?
I just, I'm hearing conflicting information, and unfortunately, we don't have those individuals here to give us a true answer to the question that's being presented. So in my opinion, I would say we leave it like this. If they have a desire to want it or not want it, they can certainly notify us.
Mr. McClan, did you have your hand up?
Well, I might as well, since you go on with it. But I will say this, that they might be in the district, but they don't have to serve. So if somebody comes in and wants to get a drink to go, and they say no, they're going to go down the road. So what's the point?
Mr. Thomas?
I'm missing one paper. Maybe you have this, Damon? The address for Red's, because I would like to expand it up the hill to include Red's Pizza. He's been very interested since the beginning.
Well, we have, we have a motion on the table right now.
Oh, I see. What was the motion?
To reduce the district.
Oh, I didn't know that was actually a motion.
Yeah, we had a motion, and I believe Ms. Snyder seconded it. There's no further discussion. All those in favor of the motion to reduce the district is, per Mr. Myers, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Four to.
Two for.
All right. Mr. Thomas?
I would like to extend up the hill to the southernmost edge of his driveway to include Red's.
We can get that.
173.
Is that the address?
Yes.
Okay, 173 May. All right, do I have a motion and a second to expand it up to Red's Pizza? All right, hearing none. Okay. All right, onward. Get a motion to approve the amendment as, ordinance as amended, 2292, on a second reading.
Okay, we've already done this part. How about this part?
I guess we need to, that part of the amendments. Yes, sir. Ms. McClan?
We already approved those amendments at the last meeting.
And the other meeting amendment tonight.
The same thing that's been added in. We've already approved it, except for the new one they filed out.
So what I'm asking for is approval of ordinance number 2292 as amended. On a second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like you to make a motion to read ordinance, suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2292 as amended by title on.
Second.
Okay, motion, second discussion. All right, hearing none.
Ms. Snyder?
Nope.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. McClan?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Ordinance number 2292, an ordinance to authorize the creation of a permanent Entertainment District with sunset.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 2292 on a second reading.
Second.
Discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
No? All right. Two opposed. All right. Thank you all. That brings us up to our third, or first order of new business application for taxi service by Dennis, All Around Cab. What is it?
Feehl.
Feehl?
Yes, sir.
Dennis Feehl. All right. Mr. Feehl is submitting an application for us.
Thank you. Thanks, Eddie.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, all the persons and others, and citizens of Eureka Springs. My name is Dennis Feehl. I'm the owner of All Around Cab Company. We have been in operation for approximately five years. I have, I also had worked as a driver for another company for over two years or about before I decided to open and operate my own taxi business. I wanted to see the insides and the outsides and this and that before I dumped my money into it. I've spent the last five years operating on the MCA-GCC Marine Corps Base Air-Ground Combat Center in 29 Palms, California, transporting Marines. And I had seven days a week access to the base, which is big, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Some companies don't get that right. We earned that right, and we got 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week access. I also covered and served the entire Morongo Basin, which was covering 29 Palms, Yucca Valley, and the town of Joshua Tree. They had lots of festivals in Joshua Tree throughout the year. We took care of all that. We had six cars in operation. We also provided transport to and from all the local hospitals, airports, hotels, resorts, and all throughout the Joshua Tree National Forest recreational areas. Obviously, we weren't all, we weren't the only ones. There's other companies there also. We transported Marines as well as civilians to and from 29 Palms to End Palm Springs on a daily basis. And that's just a quick highlight of what we do. Excuse me. And that's the business and what I'm currently running. My intentions for here, to operate in Eureka Springs, is to offer a safe way of travel to and from any functions or establishments within the city and the connected cities and counties. And also to provide transportation for possibly campers near the lakes, campsites, to be able to come up, have dinner, maybe have a drink or two, but doesn't want to come because they may drink and then they can't drive. And I might be able to offer a safe way to get them back and forth. And to and from locations all through Eureka Springs. I feel this should be a great addition to the city of Eureka Springs for transportation needs during the high seasons within and around the city of Eureka and surrounding areas. That's about it. If you look on there, you'll see what I just read to you. You'll also see my privilege license of where I'm licensed in the city of Huntsville. That's where I operate from. That's where I live. I've had a home there for over 20 years. Put $2 through college. Well, they put their sales through college. They both had scholarships. One ran track for the University of Arkansas for four years, and the other one had a $60,000 scholarship. I'm back now from California. I don't plan on living out there no more. We will be selling our house, and we will be residing here. This is kind of like, kind of like a test model for me to see how it goes. I'm hoping it'll do well. I will be putting 100% of my time and effort into this. And just because I'm in Huntsville, if someone calls me from Eureka, I'm going to show up regardless. I can't deny one, one ride or another, if I want to establish my time in the business. That's all I can say for now. Anyone have any questions?
Ms. McClan?
Is it all right to ask you one question?
Sure.
If you're going to live in Huntsville, and I live here in town, and I need a ride to ours, I mean, you're only 30 minutes away.
Correct. And I'll let you know that. I mean, unless I'm here in town, that will be, you know, a little bit of a catch. But my, I'm starting fresh. I don't have any clients. I don't have any clientele here. I'm wanting to establish that. That's why I'm here tonight.
You're not going to have a car here full time.
Not in the very beginning, but if I start to, if I start to pick up clientele, and I will, as far as when, you know, in the month of March forward, for the, when the season actually starts, it's pretty dead right now.
24 hours a day?
Right. But I do offer 24-hour-a-day service. And if I do have to come here, and I have to do that, I mean, there's not many grocery stores here that I know that are open 24 hours a day.
But that's an example.
But during, but during business hours, if I need to come here, I will. And if it is even a short ride, I will let them know, hey, it'll be 30 minutes before I can get there, but I will come. I will not deny that ride. I have never done that, and that's why my reputation is so well out there. But I have to build a little, but if I do build, then I do plan on putting, you know, a permanent car daily, probably me for now, in this area. And my wife is sitting right over there, and she would operate there in Huntsville. So one of us will come here, one of us will stay there if, if, if we can get going. But I- I haven't been able to even run a test model or anything here yet because it's the dead of winter, and I just brought the car out here just before New Year's, or actually two days before New Year's. So I haven't had no, and I know January to, you know, like you were discussing earlier, January, February, and the beginning of March is pretty slow. So I will come, because I can't build customers without coming and proving to them that I'm reliable. So that's a great question, but I just, at this point, I'm not going to lie to you and say that there's going to be a car sitting here twenty-four hours a day.
And I can't lie to you. It makes it difficult for me to prove something that's not going to be an immediate service that I can, you know, that I can call, and if I'm at a motel and I want to come downtown and eat, and I've got to wait, you know, thirty or forty minutes for somebody to come get me.
Well, typically...
I may starve for that.
Well, I doubt that, but I will say this.
I'll bring you a burger.
I'll bring you a burger or something, but in the taxi cab business, a fifteen to twenty, maybe even twenty-five minute wait in most cities is not that uncalled for. You know, it's a pretty normal wait time. There's no, anytime I would tell someone, I'll be there in less than fifteen minutes unless I was right around the corner. I could be on a ride, I could be doing something else, transporting someone, and I'm not saying I'm bringing five, six cars here. I've got one to start with. But I would do my very best and be very diligent in my time to get here, and I won't say, hey, I'll be here in ten minutes and not show up for thirty-five. But as far as the hotels goes, I will, you know, that would be great. I would love to start getting, you know, stuff like that, but I got to start somewhere. Yes, ma'am?
I think having a place that does have lodging, we have had on several occasions, I know there are some individuals in town who are doing Uber. I know there is another taxi service, but from time to time, there are individuals who are unable to get someone to come and pick them up. So, you know, it could be that they're having a dinner at seven, and so they know in advance that they need to have a ride at seven o'clock. So, I mean, it's kind of first come, first served, right? You answer the phone, you either get the business or you don't get the business. I think it is nice to be able to have another option. I think, you know, people should have the opportunity. If it doesn't work out for them, it doesn't work out for them, but there have been many occasions that I have witnessed where people have not been able to get transportation because the ones that are currently here are busy. Now, it's not going to happen every weekend. It's certainly probably not going to happen in January, February, but there are months out of the year where you're going to have to decide whether or not that's equitable, you know, to have that business here if it's approved.
And as far as the hotels, that would be, I have not begun soliciting any of the hotel owners or offices until I've come here and I can get going, because I don't want to do that until I have the approval to do so. But once I do, then it's going to be full steam ahead. I'm a straightforward guy. I'm not going to lie to you. I'm going to tell you straight to you how I can do it, and if I can do it, I can do it. If I can't, I can't.
Yeah, and I think most of the lodgings will probably do similar to what we do. We say, these are the things that are available. Here's the information.
Right.
Give them a call, see if they're available. If they're not, you know...
Right, and I'm going to tell them when they call. I could be thirty minutes away. I could be on another ride. It might be forty-five minutes. Nobody can, even the local people here that do taxi service of any kind cannot guarantee that every time that phone rings, I can be there in five minutes. They could be doing something else. And then the other subject about Uber, that's a whole different ballgame, okay? They are a total different thing, and that's a battle, because they use the Uber app for a long time, and then after they do that, they put out their business cards and say, just call me direct.
Yeah, I'm not here to argue one or the other.
No, 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 I'm just saying. So that's our competition we have with Uber. They just go straight to the person, and now they're just doing it just like a taxi. But I will do my due diligence to provide Eureka with the best possible timing and availability as possible, and if it gets going well, I will immediately, it's not to my benefit not to put another car on to make more revenue, which also helps Eureka with their tourism, getting people from point A to point B safely. And you'll see on there, my cars are very well marked. They're all California standards, and they have meters, top hats, and marked on all three sides with car numbers, so that way they're very safe. People know what they're getting in. They're not getting in a vehicle that has no markings. They don't know who they're riding with, and we were federally background checked basically every ninety days. So, you know, I'm not worried about that aspect either. Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Snyder?
Well, as you can see, I'm kind of biased here.
There you go.
In fact, my son, who's an 11th generation Marine, was stationed twice.
In Twenty-Nine Palms.
For Iraq, training for there, and for Afghanistan fifteen years later.
Yeah, good. Ooh rah.
Yeah, ooh rah. Have you considered, as the season starts to open up, usually April or May, of just kind of hanging out in the parking lot?
Yes, well, yeah, kind of. I don't like really hanging out in parking lots, but I will be in the local area.
We've had a lot of them do that over the years.
Yeah, yeah. Well, my goal is, also, my goal's always been clientele. Get it in the hotels, get it to the people, and let them know, hey, when they meet me, hey, this is a good guy. He's got a good wife that drives too. We've been married next year, thirty years. So, you know, we're a team. So, yes, that is a goal when the season starts to be here, because let me just be honest with you. I'm not going to see much business in Huntsville, okay?
That's for sure.
No tourist town. So I will be here if I get the opportunity, and someone gives me the chance. I will be right here, and I will make a good name for me and represent the city well.
Because we have had that happen a lot, where they sit in the parking lot by the courthouse.
Yeah.
On the weekends, that makes them available right there.
Right there, yeah.
But it helps to let the bars and hotels know that.
Sure, sure.
So, there's something to think about.
I will go from door to door at that time if I have to come and get a solicitation permit or whatever for the city, whatever it may need. I don't know, but I would go and touch base with them, let them know who I am, kind of the same way I'm with you all today, and try to build a reputation, because I don't plan on going nowhere. This is where I want to be, right here, you know, and within the twenty-five mile range. My mother, my brothers, my cousins, they all live in Huntsville, so I don't want to move to here, but I'm close. I'm really close.
Ms. Harmon?
According to this info that you've provided for us on taxi cabs.
Yes.
My understanding, this is for Butch, my understanding is that we have to vote on this as to give or not give?
To, right, prove a certificate of public convenience.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve this certificate of public convenience and necessity.
I'll second that.
All right, discussion. Ms. McClung?
I just want to say one thing, and I don't, please don't take this wrong, but it's, we've had other outfits that have come in here and made promises, and they're gone. We have one here that's, he's invested in this town, and he's been here.
Right.
Some people like him, some people don't like him.
And unfortunately, I've already met that gentleman, and it wasn't in a very nice way.
Well, I'm just making my point.
Right, I understand.
He's here, and I appreciate he's always been here, and I think that's important. I think that it's, you know, being a part of the community is...
And I'm right there with you, but I'm not going to lie to you and say that I'm going to move tomorrow to Eureka Springs.
I understand.
But I will honor serving this town, and if it's, all my time is here, then this is where I'll be, and I'll drive my little twenty minutes back to my house. I'm born and raised in Southern California. I'm used to driving long distances. This little twenty minute, twenty-five minute ride back and forth ain't going to kill me.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, do we have any others with certificates in town?
We've got two.
We have two. Plus Uber, right? I mean, that...
I think that we got plenty. I'm afraid we're going to hurt the others. I have further comments? I think we had a motion and a second. All those in favor of issuing a certificate of public convenience to Mr. Boyer, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Let me get a real call, please. So unclear.
All right, real call.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Mr. McClung?
No.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Four to.
All right. There you go, sir. Thank you very much. Need to come down and see the clerk.
Yes, sir.
And do you have any business cards in the afternoon?
That's fine. I'm in no rush. I just, I want to get things going, get things set up.
All right, that brings us to our next item of business is a lease for Seventy-One Spring Street patio. Get a motion to...
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right, this is a lease from, between the city, this and Linda Hager, who owns the little patio up there on the corner, which we were just talking about, on Spring Street, next to the New Orleans Hotel and the gallery. She has leased for several years that piece of property, and that lease expired, and she needs, is wanting to renew that lease. So it's for $500 a year.
Tell them what it used to be.
I don't remember now. What was it?
A dollar.
A dollar, that's what I thought.
Hey, but he got paid.
I need that lease.
This is, we'll be extending the lease for a period of five years. Ms. Green?
I know she's leased it for several years. Has it always been little five-year ones?
No, it was twenty-five years. It was a dollar a year for twenty-five years.
Okay. And why has it changed?
Because it was a dollar a year, and I felt like...
I guess I'm asking, you know, would she be more amendable for twenty-five years?
Oh, of course she is. I wasn't.
Oh, you weren't. So you, okay.
I think it's in best interest for them to come before the council every five years, because otherwise we tend to forget these things, and this is what happened in this case.
Yes, we do.
And in twenty-five years, we'll tend to forget it, and at that time, it may be worth...
The property value keeps...
It may be worth $5,000 a year. Who knows?
All right.
So I felt it best to be, and she was acceptable to five years at $500 a year.
Okay.
Ms. Snyder?
Well, I'm just wondering how we went from a dollar for twenty-five to 500 a year for five. Capitalism.
Because I asked her, I said I wasn't going to renew it for a dollar a year.
Well, I mean, I wouldn't say it's a dollar. I'm just saying how to go from all the way up to 500 a year.
Because that's, I said, well, it could have been a thousand.
Well, it could have been a lot of stuff. I'm just trying to see if there was any rhyme or reason to that number.
All right. Ms. Harmon?
Any, there's no, there's no expenses to the city, correct?
No.
So you're not offsetting anything?
See, I can't see a hundred years.
Mr. Mayor?
You know, I still think it's a heck of a bargain. It's a hell of a location.
The council wants to make it more, and it's always up to the council.
I make the motion, we make it a thousand dollars a year.
How about a hundred a year for five years, which is 500?
We got a motion. I'm waiting on a second.
For what? Have a motion?
Yes, Harry just made a motion for a thousand a year.
Yeah, right. Okay, go away, Harry.
You did make that. Yes, I did. I thought you did. All right.
I thought you were being funny.
Okay, no second. All right, Ms. Green?
I'll make a motion that we assign the resolution a number and read it into passage.
Second.
Ms. Snyder, did you second that?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Discussion? All right. Real call.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Resolution number will be seven-seven-one. Resolution for the lease of, on city-owned property adjoining Seventy-One Spring Street, whereas the city of Eureka Springs, by authority of ordinance number eight-zero-eight, passed and approved October fifteenth, nineteen... Lease the hereafter described property to Otto Bergman and Renee Bergman for a period of twenty-five years, and whereas the original lease agreement dated on October fifteenth, nineteen sixty, filed for record on October twentieth, nineteen sixty, and recorded in deed book sixty-two on page one-hundred-and-forty-four, in the office of the circuit clerk and ex-officio recorder in and for the Western District of Carroll County, Arkansas, contained an option to renew the lease for a period of twenty-five years, and whereas resolution number two-nine-five passed and approved on October, excuse me, August twenty-ninth, nineteen eighty-five, extended said lease for twenty-five years, and was recorded in mortgage record book fifty on pages two-hundred-and-forty-three through two-hundred-and-forty-five, and whereas Linda Hager, owner of Seventy-One Spring Street, desires to extend the lease agreement for a period, for a five-year term. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, upon payment of the sum of $500 per year, mayor and the city clerk treasure hereby authorize execution of the property described here in for a period of five years. Section two, the real property covered by the lease shall be described as follows. The east one half of that part of Spring Street that is adjacent to and joins the north twenty-nine feet of Lot Seven, front and back, all in block five, Riley and Armstrong flat of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. It is the intention of the city to describe the patio area enclosed by a cut stone retaining wall on the west and north sides of the above described property and adjoining property owned by Linda Hager.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to our next item of business is a discussion for council email notification, special events, Ms. Snyder and Ms. Green.
I make a motion to discuss.
I'll second that.
Okay, what I meant by special events last meeting was not our usual public events that you announce every meeting. I'm talking the special ones like last year when Main Street had that tri-state thing going on. They were here from three different states for three days, and we did all that neat stuff. We should have known about that. We should have been able to participate, join with them, whatever. This not only would look good, but it would have been very informative on both sides, but we didn't know anything about. I found out that literally the very last minute, like an hour before it got started. Those kind of things are really important for council members to know about, and whenever possible, they should be participating. These are things that are helping our town, improving our town, dealing with our town, and with other people who will help hopefully improve and deal with our town. But we need to know. There's no reason why, when these things get scheduled, I know the mayor's office knows about, there's no reason why council people can't be emailed and said, you know, in three months, this is going to be coming up, or in a month, this is coming up. These are the things we need to know about. Participating in that particular event and like doing that tour at the Crescent and getting locked in the morgue and everything, not only was that fun for us, but it was fun watching the reaction of this tri-state group of people who knew very little about our history and learned really fast. When you get locked in a morgue and have to scream your way out, it was fascinating, and we were a major hit. You always know about it because you're always asked to give a little speech, usually at the end, sometimes at the beginning, but there's no reason why we shouldn't be told to, so we can participate if we can or want or need. I'm just saying, we need to know what's going on. We are the city council. We should know about these special events that are coming up that are not the big, well-known public events.
Ms. Green?
Do you, when you're doing your mayor comments at the end and do the events, do you bring these events to light?
I try to bring all the events to light.
Okay.
Is that what you ask?
Yes. I mean, is this, so you try to bring that...
I'm trying to think about that, try what Ms. Snyder was talking about, and I don't remember.
I can't remember the name either.
Why?
Right here, cook off.
Why that wasn't mentioned at...
Well, you and I did two things last year that had, nobody knew about.
Yeah, I had the four. Butch, so in other words, could you, instead of emailing, I think that's cumbersome, and it falls on Kim to take care of all that, could you make a point when some of these may be important to the council, to maybe note it in your closing comments?
No, because not the public can go.
I try to always do that. I guess I'm confused at what a special event, definition of a special event is still, that the council, I hadn't been notified of. Ms. Harmon?
I know, based on what the event was, I know I've gotten some of the notifications just because I've signed up for, or asked people to notify me if there are things going on. If, if I'm hearing Mickey correctly, what I think she's asking you to do is look at your calendar and anything on there that might be of interest to council, can you let us know that, what you've got on your calendar? So I don't know if that means, well, you can't share your calendar because you don't have, you're not probably on something that will allow you to share, but it sounds like what she's wanting you to do is notify all of us of probably the majority of the events that you would go to. I mean, because who's going to determine which one is special and which one isn't?
Mr. McClung?
I think what she wants to do is stalk you.
Yeah, great.
We have, the city has a calendar of events, we've got a couple of them. So, I mean, it's already published, I mean, if you, if you look, if you want to know what's going on, look at it. That might be difficult.
I think I understand that there are a lot of confusing lists of events and I think that's what Mickey is talking about. You could miss one event or another, but I don't know that the mayor is the gnostic... I'm not sure I'm the party notifier.
Yeah, and I'm sure you go to a lot of them where they want to go to.
I think we put too much on his back there, on his plate. I'm still trying to wrap my head around, I mean, I try to notify the council of what I think is all the significant events coming up. I don't think the council wants to know that we have the EMS conference, fire conference at the, at the convention center I'm going to be attending.
I wouldn't want to.
Because a lot of those are private events.
That's the word.
They're private events.
Mm-hmm.
And you pay, these people pay money to go to these conferences and I'm there to give, to welcome them. I guess if they wanted the whole council there, they would well ask the whole council to be there. So, I don't know if that's a special event that you're talking about or otherwise, I try to notify everybody of the special events that come up, that I think y'all are interested in and it's in the public. Ms. Snyder?
Okay, I'm not referring to public events where anybody in town or anybody in the area who wants to show up can, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking, okay, the tri-state event was a three-day training, learning type situation thing for city folk that's not open to the public. As local council people know, we did not have to pay. These kind of things, you as the mayor are always asked to speak at, so you always know about them, rarely do we know, and I don't know that they actually go on the city site because it's not open to the public. But these are things that as councilmen, we should be involved in if we can or if we need or want. There were two things, I can't remember what the second one was last year, you and I both had went, you spoke in both of them and nothing was ever said and during council comments I brought up, by the way, you know, we did whatever. There was, you know, this, this is what I'm talking, not just, not the stuff for the public, more of the centered stuff. Main Street would be able to explain better than I can, but there's several different things like that that do happen to and in our town.
Ms. Green?
I think what she's trying to say is if there's some, I don't think it's called a special event, there's some kind of like a seminar that would benefit us and training, I think that's what she's asking for.
Well, when they're held here, we should be able to participate, but if we don't know about it, we can't.
Well, some of them are paid and, and like the mayor said, he goes...
And as our council people, we don't have to. I'm not talking to EMS training. Seminars, yes.
Some of them, what, they do want to be paid. And we can either pay or not.
Mr. McClung?
May I suggest to the mayor that he have his able-bodied assistant, whenever something comes up, just send us an email or something, just, you know, if, if she thinks, if it's good enough for her, it's good enough for me. So if she thinks we need to have it, she can send it. She, she does that already anyway.
Yes.
We probably got one for that, we just probably didn't read it. Wouldn't surprise me.
No, we didn't.
I will try to pay more attention to the special events and let you know about them.
Well, I said, it's just...
Now, I don't know what the special events are, I don't know if you want to go to the...
This one, some of them I was really fascinated.
Water and sewer convention event.
Please don't let me know.
Actually, that might help.
Does it run downhill?
You know, uh...
Let me know. She was Miss Water Sewer of nineteen eighty-four.
All right, I, I, I may have, we'll see what I can do, I'll try to be better about notifying you of special events. I'll make sure my able-bodied, efficient assistant...
Sorry, Kim.
Can come up with a definition.
We want to know everything.
All right, can we go on?
Yes.
Let's do the, uh, item number for a discussion of employee manual in conflict with code, with Mr. Meyer and Ms. Green. Motion to discuss. Make a motion.
I'll second that.
All right, Ms. Meyer? Okay, um, a while back, and it seems that, and it seems that everybody was surprised when I mentioned it, but it's in the code book, that, that says that the police department, the police chief and when he hires someone, he comes to the mayor and then gets approval or confirmed by the city council and, and then the mayor sent me an ordinance that adopts this new policy handbook back in 2007, although there are some dates in here from 2008, I'm not sure about that, why that is, but yeah. Uh, and that's a, okay, 2061. Evidently it was updated into 2061. So, but at the bottom of this, Tim, in section four, it says all other ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here within are hereby repealed to the extent of this conflict. And it really doesn't say that, you know, when we look at the code, the code states that if you want to change the code, you've got to mention the number in the code and go through a more of a process than just filing an ordinance.
No, you file an ordinance to change the code. And an ordinance adopting the handbook would make several different changes in the code potentially, and if they're, if the adoption is after the original code, they make those changes.
Then why is it still in the code book? It's kind of confusing.
Because code books are notorious for needing to be ratified out or purged occasionally and we've done that a couple of times over the last 20 years, but things continue, time slips through. You will find in the Arkansas driver's book that when you go to Holiday Island tonight, if you were to go to Holiday Island, each curb you come to, you're to blow your horn before you go around that corner. And I do believe that's still in the books. Was there about five years ago, because we had a trial right over here about it.
Really? Well, see, here's, here's another ordinance that postdates this code book, I mean, this, this employee manual and it has another addressing that part of the code about the number of police officers, and it states in there that the, that the council sets the number of police officers. So, now it did, it failed, but evidently somebody thought that the code was still good. Let's purge the book then, so that people don't get confused if none of this means anything. Ms. Harmon?
I guess what I'm, what I ask you here is, from what Tim said, it sounds like the ordinance is going to override any mistakes that can be in the book, correct?
They should override, the current ordinance should override any past ordinances that are...
But you keep asking about the police, something about your, your police info in there. Are you, are you specifically wanting us to address that particular...
No, not at this time, I, I want to address the...
Inaccuracies?
The inaccuracy of the code book so that we know what code is, so that citizens also, it's online, you know? The code, the code book gets ratified and that's what the clerk does, that some of these things get missed and that's a section that needs to be ratified after...
So is there a place where he can look outside of the printed form that he can get exactly what he's looking for?
Are, none of, all these later ordinances are not online, so you've got to kind of call Ann and ask her to hunt them up. There used to be someone that was hired in the office... I think they, I think they are online, but Madam Clerk, what's your...
These events don't always synchronize. For instance, the 2019 update that was handed out not long ago has yet to be updated online for a number of reasons.
Sure.
Multiple efforts have been made to accomplish that. It is true that if an entity, a commission, a person, a council member, hopes and ordinance get passed and they are not completely familiar with everywhere in the book that particular topic is referenced, it is not unusual for there to be remnants from old law. And so what I say again, again, if you see an inconsistency and you, you can help identify where the error was made because there is another ordinance, I request that you let me know and I will do my best to correct that on the next update.
Well...
The subject referencing who approves hiring of officers was investigated, information was sent over to me, helping me understand that when that employee handbook was passed, that particular thing wasn't known to the person whose responsibility it was at the time to update the code book. Sometimes things happen inadvertently and so if you will be so kind as to point them out, we can track back to find out if your perception is correct and fix it legally.
So, well, I guess the, it's difficult when we can't find, you know, there's a lot of ordinances that are online.
Right.
There's not a published ordinance book in the library or something that we can go to, so I, you see, I hate bothering you, if, if we had that same person that we had in the past that could go through the ordinances and post them online so that we could, because it's, it's, they're way behind. It stops at 1999.
He's, he's gone and I miss him, Harry, believe me.
I'm sure you do, I mean, it stops, ordinances online stop at 1999 and it's frustrating as can be when an ordinance is, is referenced in our code book and we can't find it.
Well, ideally, and I'll wrap up my comment on this, if you want to see an ordinance, it is available and I, part of my job is to make accurate information available. Please feel free to come in and if it's not online, I will do my best to help you find it.
Thank you, you always have, it's just... And we're also, part of the money that we've given to the clerk was for ratification of an update of our code books. So every year we should be updating the code books. So that's part of this information that you're looking for. Now getting on to the website, that's, and I don't even want to think about what's going to happen, we're having issues with our website as it is right now, so there's no telling where we're going to go with that, but anyway, but the, the code book update should be taken care of.
If, if there, almost every code references an ordinance.
Right.
So, if I want to go look at the ordinance that creates that code so I really know what it's all about and it's not online...
Come on down.
And it, and then I got to go, then I got to go call Ann.
That's true.
I'm happy to...
Just like anyone else.
Yep.
And, well, yeah, sure, but probably next time we do a budget, we need to add somebody to start loading, putting this online and if, if our website isn't big enough, then we need to add some space on it or something. No, we, there's just a little bit more detail than that. Anyway, any other comments? Uh-uh. All right, uh, all right, I'd put the Carroll Boone Water District rate increase on our agenda here. We got a notice from the Carroll Boone Water District that they are going to, effectively January first, change our cost for water from a dollar fifty-five per thousand gallons to a dollar seventy-five per thousand gallons. We don't have any say in the case. Carroll Boone is, that's, they're just upping their, their cost. And so it's up to the council as to whether or not we want to absorb that cost, which is going to amount to around forty to fifty thousand dollars a year, or if we want to pass that on to our customers. Ms. Meyer? I, I don't think that we need to just absorb it, we've gotten rates up to where we're barely covering the cost of the water and sewer to plant now, so we got to do something. We can't... Ms. Snyder?
Um, how many thousand is our minimum monthly water thingy?
What?
Okay. Our minimum water bill, how many thousands of gallons is that?
I have no idea.
I've got it, if you want to look at it.
It's not, it's like five or something like that.
Oh.
Well, we need that before we can go on.
I mean, ultimately it's going to cost the city roughly fifty thousand dollars a year if we don't get the right rate increase.
Okay, what I'm saying is if it's like five thousand, that's a dollar for household. That's what we have to look at, is to see how much for household are we talking just by going by the minimum? The monthly minimum?
It can't be one month. Mr. McClung?
The, the minimum is three thousand gallons.
It's two.
Is it two?
Okay, so we're talking forty cents per household, so there's no reason why they, even in our times, is...
Households use more than two thousand gallons.
The majority of households are on minimum. That came up when we were talking about all this last year, the year before, whenever it was. Anyway, so we're talking...
So it's fifty cents.
So we're talking twenty cents per gal, per thousand and whether they, even if they go to five thousand gallons, that's still only a dollar. Is that a year or a month? No, that's a month.
A month.
Oh, well, a dollar a month is affordable.
Do we need a resolution?
We would probably need to raise the water rate, which would require a war, it'll require an ordinance.
Okay. Ms. Meyer? Um, can we just table this till next month and, and we can...
Yeah, we can.
We can go ahead and sort the, sort the cost. But I think we really, I think we need to raise the rates, I mean, how we raise the rate is... It's, it's going to cost the city roughly thirty-five hundred dollars to four thousand dollars a month. Well, I'm not saying table it forever, I'm saying table it till next meeting. If you want to make that motion, go for it. I'll make a motion that we, and then come, we can come back with some numbers on rates.
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion, Mr. McClung?
Yeah, I would, I would like the, the mayor and public works to kind of come together and, and make a recommendation to us, actually. recommendation to us, actually.
We can already give you our recommendation.
Well, then, why don't you?
We recommend go ahead and pass this on.
Well, I know, I know. I'm not saying that. I'm saying how much?
Oh, just what they're recommending. I mean, I'm not saying any more or any less, just increasing, passing on this rate increase that Carol Boone has given us. I hope that answers your question.
No, it doesn't, because I, I mean, I haven't got anything to calculate that off of. Is that, you know, is that, is it just going to just, is it going to go up 20, 20 cents per thousand?
It's going to go up, yes, 20 cents per thousand is what Carol Boone--
Across the board. That's what you're wanting to do.
Yes, correct.
Well--
So that's why if we wait for next one, we'll have all the numbers in front of us.
I'm not sure that's the right way to do it.
I don't either. I'm not sure. Ms. Harmon?
If we don't do it tonight, the last rate increase was April of 2017, and it was 2255 is the ordinance number, if anybody wants to look it up to see where it breaks out. That one broke out.
I don't think it mentions Carol Boone. That's just a rate increase for--
Yeah, well, it was a rate increase.
Yeah.
But this would be a rate increase too.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, you're correct.
It's 307.1.
All right, anybody else? Mr. Thomas?
The way the water rates are structured, you're already reducing rates for heavy users, so I'm not sure what the discussion of the numbers is. It seems like you should just pass it on.
There really won't be any change. It's going to be, from my understanding, it's going to cost us 20 cents per thousand gallons extra, period.
Right.
So for every thousand gallons that we use, it's going to cost us 20 cents more.
If we're still discussing it, Mr. Mayor--
Yes, sir.
Then why not, if you're going to go ahead and raise it 30 cents a thousand?
Oh, we can.
Well, is that maybe that not a better idea? Because it's still, you know, on a minimum user, that's still going to be just a dollar increase, less than a dollar increase.
Put it on paper for next meeting.
You know, it'd be something that people could absorb.
Okay. Ms. Harmon?
I guess I'm going back to Terry, but why would we raise it 30 if we only are required to raise it 20? I mean, what would be, what would be the, I guess, what would be the point in doing that?
Give the sewer and water, we give the water department more revenue?
Oh, I understand that.
And we can give them--
I mean, obviously, if you're going to charge more than what you're being charged, there would be additional money. My argument to that would be, we've already put additional charges on everyone's bill in 2017.
Yes, yes. I understand that.
Ms. Meyer? Well, that's the reason I proposed we put this off, because there's several ways. I mean, the discounted rate for the bigger users, perhaps we lower their discount. That's one, that's one angle. And as Terry said, if we change the rate a little bit higher than we're covering this increase, then perhaps we can pay the people that work for the water and sewer department a living wage.
All right.
Ms. Snyder?
I'm just, we have a motion to put this on the next meeting when we'll have all the numbers in front of us. Can we go ahead and vote on that, please? That was not the motion, to put it off to the next meeting?
The motion was to table it, to defer it to the next meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
What do you have as a motion?
I'll go with the first.
All right, if there's no further discussion on deferring this to the next meeting--
Yeah, I'd like to discuss a little bit.
Mr. Thomas?
That's the point of the next meeting.
If we write, if we authorize the writing an ordinance tonight, whatever, 20, just passing it on, then you can do your study, you can look at your rates and all that stuff for the next two weeks, but we'll be two weeks ahead of the game if we have an ordinance to amend when we come back for our next meeting.
I think Mr. Thomas has a valid point. If, I think we're going to, unless we're going to eat this rate, we're going to have an ordinance raising the rates, whether it's 20 cents or 30 cents or $5, who knows? But at this point, I think that's a valid--
I would draw my motion.
I would draw my second.
Okay.
Bob, make a motion.
I move that we ask Mr. Weber to draft an ordinance that passes on this 20 cent per thousand gallon increase.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on that?
20 cents will pass it on. Those are the water leaks. What? Those are the water leaks. But anyway, I understand what you're saying, and if you pass what you just did, I'll prepare. Thank you.
You're the one that let the bars keep serving.
All right. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, sing five of saying aye? Any opposed?
No.
Okay. All right, next one, and I don't know whether we really got a workshop, but I know we want to set a workshop. And I would probably, because, get a motion to discuss workshop date for the hospital commission.
Discuss. She's a placeholder.
It's on the agenda.
It's just a placeholder.
It's Ms. Harmon and Ms. Green. I'd like to, go ahead and--
Go ahead.
All right, no, I was going to say make this the second, you know, wait, go ahead. I don't have--
I wouldn't say we do it early February, because I think they need to get on, you know, get some, a little bit of control once February 1st is in place, but I would say not necessarily maybe February, but maybe March, if we could set a workshop in March to just get caught up with them and be able to ask them questions as to how they feel that transition is going, and if there are any, I guess, questions from any of us regarding any other item.
Let me check and see about getting a workshop scheduled for everybody, including the hospital commission. We'll get to you on that.
Okay.
All right. Brings us up to the next item, motion to discuss travel guidelines. Mr. Thomas?
Yes. Nobody liked my little proposal to have council travel money, so I want to talk about the mayor's travel budget, which is $6,000, which has to accommodate a whole lot of people. I think we've hit the roadblock that Ms. Harmon brought up last week, is somebody's going to abuse it, and right now, we have no guidelines for usage, except what the mayor approves or whatever. There's $6,000 in there. Some individuals have already spent, or almost $1,700, and, you know, if we all go in and want $1,700 for the travel, he's going to be stuck because he won't have any guidelines to decide who gets what. So I make the motion that, oh, Susan, you look like, can I help you?
No, I was just thinking, you said he'll be stuck. He won't be stuck. He'll just have to say, no, there's no more money.
Well, but I mean, he's going to say yes to those three people and no to the, to the seven. So I make a motion that council appoint someone to work with the mayor to assist him in developing some guidelines for how he can equitatively dispense travel funds.
I'll second that and nominate you, Bob.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. To have Bob and I work together for, to develop some travel guidelines.
Sounds good.
Mr. Meyer?
I guess I'm put up here as the big spender, right?
Hey, big spender.
All right, look.
Are you?
Bob and I would talked about going to this, to this workshop for the finance and budget workshop and training, and then Bob couldn't go. For some reason or another, the date changed. One of the big, the big chunk of traveling to Little Rock for any of the municipal league things, and by the way, we paid the municipal league big money to provide this stuff to us. There's no sense in us not taking advantage. Education for the council, I think, is appropriate and needed, but the big expense is travel. And if we're going to go, if two or more are going, we carpool all of a sudden, that saves a bunch of money. If, if I'm the only one going because I think I need to learn this stuff, and there were things that I did learn when I was down there.
I think the motion is to appoint a committee, Bob and I, to set up some travel guidelines.
And, yes, and I'm putting my 2 cents worth in right now, since he mentioned me. He didn't mention you. He didn't mention you, just mentioned the need for travel guidelines. Are you--
You identified yourself.
Are you, yeah, are you talking about a need?
Well, actually, I think it was less--
Are you discussing the need or not need for travel guidelines?
Ms. Meyer?
That's the motion. Do we need travel guidelines? That's the motion. Why? Why do we need travel guidelines?
Travel training--
Because it seems, it can be abused. No. Because he thinks-- Mr. Meyer, let me speak.
Mr. Meyer, please, you asked a question, I said, because it can be abused.
Let me speak. Abused, no. He's talking about his, in his suggestion, or in his introduction, it was the $6,000 is going to be spent. So the guideline must be we have to stay within the $6,000, or we're--
That's our budget.
We can amend the budget.
We're talking about the guidelines. We can, if you're not for the guidelines, that's fine. You can vote no. If you have a comment about the guidelines, just let's go on with it. Mr. McClan?
Does the mayor not feel accountable about making his own guidelines? See, does the mayor need help with those guidelines?
No, but the motion was for, you know, to have, you know, some of the council would be involved, because it was a council, council consideration. Ms. Green?
I believe the, the way, I don't know if it's the employee manual or whatever is written, that it's pretty vague, and if I decided I wanted to go, I can just go and go and go. There's, I think what Bob is recommending is that we work on the code or whatever, the conduct, on who, how we can spend this $6,000 among all of us.
Ms. Snyder?
Okay, just out of curiosity, because we've never touched on it, does the line item that is in regards to the training for council, does that include Kim, Tim, and Anne? Because aren't they in your department?
I'm sorry, what?
Okay, you know how in the past, when we would go to training, the council, every two years, okay, when they have that session? Do they also, does, is your budget line items they need for us, does that include Tim and Kim and Anne? And shaking your head, no.
No.
Okay, so who, which department covers them if they--
Are you, are you asking about the, this is still with guidelines. That can be covered by guidelines.
Well, that's what I'm asking you. Are they part of your department in that regard?
Kim is. Anne is her own department.
Okay, what about Tim?
Tim is his own.
Okay, so knows any guidelines you come up with would be council and Kim.
We're talking about--
And you?
We're talking about council right now, guidelines.
Why wouldn't we just cover your whole department? Did it all at once?
Because I have control over my department. We're talking about the city council.
Okay. You lost me on that, but okay.
All right, we got a motion here. It's getting late, you know. We got a motion to establish some travel guidelines with Mr. Thomas and myself. All those in favor, sing five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Who are the two no's?
Down here on this end.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer, Mr. McClan. Okay. All right, agenda setting. Ms. Green?
I would like to add a discussion of the Lake Leatherwood Master Plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, and then I'd like to add ordinance 2176, a discussion of the 8% tax that goes to parks.
I'll second that.
And then one more, just the discussion of the revolution, resolution of 737, when we took, we had a resolution to accept the property for the gravity trail.
What?
Accept the property?
We accepted the property. It was with the resolution, and I don't understand.
For what property?
The, the gravity trail, the Waltons that they gave us.
Is it, I'm sorry.
No, am I wrong?
I just wanted to make sure if we're, I'm sorry. I'll raise my hand so I can--
Okay.
Mickey had her hand.
Yeah, yeah.
No, that's not for her.
Oh, okay. I just want to clarify, when you say, you want to specifically talk about each of those items?
Yes.
Okay, and accept the resolution for the property?
Yes, how we acquired it. As a resolution and what it means and how is it, where is it deeded to? Okay.
All right. Ms. Snyder?
Wait, there's a perception that it was ordinance and not a resolution, which is a temporary thing. Oh, again, there was no ordinance. Are you saying there was no ordinance?
I don't think--
Was there an ordinance? Oh, was that when I was sick, probably. I don't remember it.
Well, it's regarding accepting the property--
Right. Do you want to place a document in the minutes?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I'll find it.
Okay, Ms. Snyder?
Okay, I'd like to add a discussion in regards to how, going through the budget to come up with a way to improve the wages for our employees. We should be able to do some tweaking, hither and yon.
Make it, your addition extremely short, so I can put it on the agenda.
A discussion for improving the wages for our employees from the budget.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Thomas?
I'm just going to say discussion of the financial problems, or all of the problems that we've been hearing about at Parks.
Second.
You know, it may be better if we just have a workshop on Parks.
That's what I was just going to suggest.
I mean, we've got four items here. It's going to take all night long.
Okay. And we don't have any answers without them here. Okay, I will withdraw mine if--
And I will withdraw all three of them.
If we can, if we can set a workshop--
I think we need to have a workshop, because we're going to be arguing and discussing--
Okay. All right, can we--
We're going to work up a workshop with Parks Commission, I think.
Okay.
With us, so we can work--
I will make them, I will ask that we put, to set a workshop date with the Parks Commission and the director.
Second.
Okay.
And you withdrew your three additions, is that right?
Yes, yes, I did.
We can always come back to them later on, if needed.
Oh, yes.
All right, Mr. Meyer?
I'd like to add to the agenda, discussion of council committees.
I'll second.
Just in general.
I'll second.
All right, anybody else? All right, city council comments. I'm going to start off with you this time, Mr. Thomas, I showed off in the other room the last time.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
I want to see the video.
I tried to switch back and forth.
He did, blew your mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was fair.
Yeah, there was a horrendous front page newspaper article about our CAPC, and I went to the meeting immediately following that, because sometimes when things are either right or wrong, you still have to confront them, because it, you know, the people want to know what's happening, and they want something solid to depend on. I was really disappointed with the CAPC meeting, because everybody was anticipating that they would go into an executive session. When the chairperson called for the executive session, Scott Loftus? Yes. Got up and explained to her that to go into executive session, you have to be very specific about why you're going into that executive session, and she cut him off and just--
And she cut him off and just said, "It's a personnel matter." Well, that doesn't meet the guidelines from, from the Arkansas Code, which says that the specific purpose of the executive session, see, I'll be announced in public before going into executive session. Personnel is not specific. Then they came out and they said, "No action." Well, no action, you know, what was, I don't know what you're talking about. You could've been having coffee and whatever. I think that, that the language that I saw in that newspaper article has to be addressed. It's, you know, it's totally inappropriate for somebody in that position. And I just felt that the CAPC Commission really, really failed to, you know, be responsible for, for their employee and how she presented herself and the questions that were raised, you know, about how... And also, the Commission itself, when I keep hearing the people tell me, "Well, we thought somebody, we thought they checked the references." "I didn't check the references. I didn't see any references. We thought they checked the references." You are the "they." The Commission is the "they." That's the most important job you have, is, is appointing a director. And, you know, so, it was your job to check references. You could've appointed one person. You have an acting director. You could've appointed him to check all the references and make a report to you. But I just think that the CAPC Commission really, really, really fell down handling this, this newspaper article. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Green?
First, I'm gonna start out, and I'm gonna thank Ann Armstrong, because it was brought up tonight. She does really go the extra mile. She's helped all of us a lot of times find things, especially some of those ordinances that are buried. So, thank you, Ann. I don't think you're always appreciated.
Appreciate that.
I also want to say, because I brought up in agenda, things about Parks, that doesn't mean I'm against the Commission, the director. I think what's happening with Parks has been wonderful, and we're heading in a way that I really want to see happen. But I was pretty stunned at the Parks meeting on the finances, and it's scary. And if those are gonna continue, it's gonna ruin this really good dream of everything that is gonna start coming. And there's a great Commission there. There's some great public over there that have worked really hard. And they don't want to destroy Parks. They want it to see, go forward. And I think every one of us sitting here wants that. So, I don't want to hear, "Oh, you're against Park." I'm not. I, I'm ecstatic about what's going on with them and what can go on with them.
Ms. Snyder?
Okay, I actually have several things tonight. Okay, I'll get this part out of the way first. Scott Loftus does have a personal agenda against Lacy, our CAPC Director. And this is his way of fighting back. And regardless of what Lacy said, he has also said, he and I had a short little talk that night while they were in the privacy thing. And personnel is a very private session. You do not talk about in public what it's gonna be about on, "Well, we're gonna talk about so-and-so." No, that's not what it's, it's not why you go into executive session, it's because it's private. And when you aren't gonna take action, you don't have to say what it was you discussed. He was right on some things and wrong on others, and he was just as out of line as she's been putting up with him and a couple other guys ever since she got here. And it's all private agenda. It's ridiculous. I think we need to go by our own people, our own businesses, and if they back, we're fine. If they don't, fine. That's who we go by. So, that out of the way. I would like to tell my big sister, who's really antique today, happy birthday. And my girlfriend Marilyn, happy birthday to both of you. The big thing I want to say, and I'm glad everybody is sitting down. This is in regards to code and updating, Harry. I don't know if they've updated it yet, because I haven't looked lately, but many years ago, it was still in our codebook that it's illegal to land your airplane on Main Street. They didn't say a word about spring, only on Main. That was in our codebook as a city law. You cannot. Keep it in mind, guys, you cannot land your plane on Main Street. It's illegal, and get arrested. I'm done.
Ms. Snyder?
I'm serious.
So, I don't usually have anything to say, but this is in regards, because it's been on my mind for a little bit of time here. But this is regards to conduct and hiring as it relates to the CAPC. So, I do represent the city council on the CAPC Commission. So, and I can't speak for Terry, but I'm just gonna read something to you. I was very disappointed in having to address a reporter's questions of, "Did you ever see a background check?" And, "Are you laughing about this?" I'm not taking sides either way. I just don't like to be put in those situations. "For me, the answers to such questions must always be truthful and accurate, though at times uncomfortable. Small-town politics can be brutal, and although some appreciate my truthfulness, others do not. However, I want to assure everyone that I will continue to work as hard as I can to ensure that this issue and others related are eventually resolved and that going forward, there are policies in place for vetting potential staff. Among, along those same lines, however, is the subject of conduct and representing the city appropriately. I've received countless complaints about how the CAPC, and more importantly, the city, has been represented in all of this. The need for more professionalism within, not only with the CAPC staff and CAPC commissioners, but all of the city's institutions. We all know it's been a topic needing to be addressed for some time, but recent issues in the newspaper and social media make it a priority. Although there are a wide variety of opinions on how to handle the current situation, there is consensus within our community that we need measures in place to ensure professionalism, not only with the CAPC, the CAPC staff, but the Commission as well. Upon moving here, someone said, "Too many times, bad behavior has been rewarded here in Eureka Springs." Well, I am here to say that bad behavior cannot and should not be rewarded. As representatives of the city, our goal should always be in the best interest of the city if we are to thrive as a tourist economy and attract potential businesses to the area, with the ultimate goal of meeting